All right, it's six o'clock. Let's call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. So you can come up with an agenda this afternoon.
All right, I have a few recommendations this evening. I would like to start off with recognizing one of our elementary school teachers, Mr. Mike Shelber. The week before, or Friday before the February break, he organized Camp Free to Love, which is a long tradition at the elementary school. Mike's been doing it for...
A couple of years, I think.
A couple of years now. We have guest speakers from Fire Department, we have teachers who take on activities, who also read to the students, and it's a great way to kind of segue into vacation. So Mike lives about an hour away. I asked him to come, but I understand why he couldn't make it for that, so I told him I'd still recognize him. So again, I want to thank Mike Shelber for his efforts for Camp Free to Love and all those people who were volunteering to do that activity. I want to just also give recognition to both of our boys and girls basketball teams, who qualified for the state tournament. I believe the girls qualified, are seated, and the boys are playing team, but they're both playing tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM. The girls are playing home against Edward Kennedy Charter School, and the boys are playing away at Tinsborough at the Innovation School, which brings it out of Tinsborough. So both games start promptly at 6:00 PM. Congratulations to Coach Malone, Coach Kinnon, on very strong seasons for getting there. So we want to wish our teams the best. I know there's a pep rally tomorrow at the high school last block to send our teams off. And then last but not least, I want to recognize Jose Rivera, who recently, the week prior to vacation, became our newest thousand-point scorer. So his name will be coming in the rafters as our latest student athlete to score a thousand points. And Jose obviously will score more, because he has at least one more game to go. So congratulations, Jose, and congratulations to both the boys and the girls basketball teams who qualified for the state tournament. Congratulations. That's awesome.
Do you have the recognition?
That's it.
All right.
That's it?
Yeah, I didn't know anybody else that could share. Approval of minutes? Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I approve the motion to approve the minutes? No, I'm on the right... I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion, any questions, any corrections? All in favor? Full participation on agenda items? Communications? I don't have any. You'll have to give me a second to resolve, but I'll come back to it if I... I thought I had much... Oh, I didn't have one. I'm sorry. I know it is. There was a member of the community who had requested that we look at the possibility of changing one of the tennis courts into a pickleball court. So I explained that there's financial, you know, issues with doing that, and we have to look at that. And I said I'd bring it forward, so I brought it forward, and I don't know that there's a reason to do that inside of a school district, because I don't know that we're going to teach children how to play pickleball, but I think that might be a great thing for the common. I don't know. But certainly something that was brought forward by an individual of the community, and I wanted to bring it forward for this meeting, so.
There is a survey from Parks and Recreation, too, so it would have to be added.
Yeah. So I just wanted to put it out there. I did get that email, and I saw it was great.
Did that person have any ideas about funding? Like, did they do that just to...
No, 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 no. Just a request, because... And let's all be fair, right? Pickleball is very popular right now, right? So I don't know if that's something that's going to be to you long-term or what have you. And I understand the desire to have that available. I just don't know that that's a school property kind of a thing. But that's just mine. And that's another thing for us, so there you go. They don't play pickleball. They don't play pickleball, because it requires a different net.
You play pickleball?
I don't play it.
Oh.
Played it.
You raised your hand. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a lower net, and it's like the ball is more like a wipper ball. It's not a hard tennis ball.
And the court's smaller.
Court is smaller. It's a paddle, where there's no strings, like a tennis... It's fine. I mean, I'm living off of it.
Really shocking. Can we get the question to DC trip update, please?
Sure. I wanted to come tonight because even though it seems to be on my mind, you know, the year around the year we didn't go, which is this year, our first parent information night about DC will be March 14th. So I will get maybe an announcement, Mrs. Priestley, for the sixth-grade parents, because seventh graders will be eligible to come. I put together a little post aboard there that we will be taking to even more fundraisers as we do them. We've had some very successful fundraising over this past year, including our two Italian nights that we combined with the student council. And I have on record of people interested in going right now, including parents, chaperones, about 40 people, which, you know, they may not all play out to be able to go, but that's more than we've taken the past, the first two trips that we've gone on. So without even really hearing from the sixth graders, three sixth graders signed up who came to our information night. So they were very excited to talk to the kids at our table about the trip. And I don't have a price yet. I don't have any of that. It won't happen until we know how many people want to go. But we already have a nurse who will come with us, eh? And this trip is actually in 2025. So we're not going this April. It'll be April 2025. And we will continue to fundraise. We have almost $4,000 from this past year in individual students who are going. Some of them are up around the $500 mark. So we take fundraising very seriously. So I just wanted to come and tell you, you'll be hearing a lot more about DC fundraising, because starting in March, we will be full force trying to get all of the kids who want to go, give them a chance to go. So and actually, yesterday, I was in DC. I was coming home from South Carolina, and we stopped, and I went to the Smithsonian Natural History Museum and saw Henry the African Elephant and took a picture with him so I could show the kids and tell them about how exciting it is to go to places like that. So they were pretty interested to hear about it. So I don't know if you have any questions. I won't have any of the finite details till much later on, so.
Mrs. Hanson, if you could take that
Yep.
and put it down here so he can get a picture of that, that would be great. You don't have to leave it there for long. Just bring it down.
Okay.
Because I don't think his camera will turn around and see that like it's supposed to.
So these are pictures from the past two trips that we've gone on. One of the pictures, I'm going to face them.
Absolutely.
We had some students, we actually were able to do the re-linge ceremony at Arlington the first year we went, which was a great honor for the students that participated in that. We had lots of good food, so, you know, went to so many interesting places and very interesting bus rides, so. But last year we went to the aquarium, so that kind of made the difference in the bus ride situation in Baltimore, so we stopped and did that, so. But that is... That is it for tonight. I just wanted to let you know we're working really hard to see who wants to go, and we will do our best to make sure they will hurry to go.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much.
Oh, and we have a fundraiser Wednesday night at the Plan Box. So if you dine out and mention North Brookfield, the profit we're sharing again with the student council, it seems to be a good fit for us to work together on fundraising. But anytime from 11:00 to 8:30, if you go and mention that we're raising money, they will give us 15% of your food purchase, so, this Wednesday.
So it's at the Plan Box in Brookfield?
Yes, in Brookfield.
Okay. So go to the Plan Box in Brookfield.
On Wednesday.
Of course.
And mention host.
I'm sorry. A lot that was evident, but okay. Mention them.
And in addition to the meal, order that appetizer.
Right, exactly. And then make a dessert.
Yeah.
So it's like...
My grades are looking really good.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. North Brookfield High School, class of 2024, senior trip request.
Yes, so Kate Moon, I'm the senior class advisor. So I have their trip proposal. This is something that we've had an ongoing tradition of a senior class trip, typically done in May. So we're shooting for May 17th to the 19th. It's the weekend right before their last day of school. So they won't interfere with any of their finals or anything like that. So after talking with the class about a variety of different places, they wanted to, they landed on going camping. So we are going to take, we have about 20 right now that are for certain that they want to go. So we're going to head down to, or would like to head down to Nickerson State Park in Brewster, Mass. They have Breakwater Beach, which is right around the corner. And then there's also some Wicked Waves, which is a water park. There's a couple different hiking trails that we are also looking into to kind of fill our time within the schedule. And then we have a class cookout that we want to do with burgers and hot dogs at the campground, as well as doing a fire and just a lot of class bonding. So they're looking forward to it.
Are there any questions?
No.
No, Nickerson's a great park. It's a really nice spot.
I had no idea. I've never been there, but...
I've never been there either, but I'm really excited.
I have to tell you, that's probably the most detailed trip request I've ever seen.
Oh, perfect.
Literally. I don't know if I do that much detail in project, or else I make it worse.
Yeah, I just, I like to make sure I have all my...
No, you did. And then somebody else's, too. I started, and they...
All the things.
He's got it.
Yep.
They're serious about that quiet time, too.
Oh, they are.
That is a well-controlled part.
They are, yes. I've heard that. After a lot of the reviews that I was looking at, they're pretty hard on that quiet hour. But we have a really great group of seniors this year. They're going to be really greatly missed within the school culture, but I don't foresee any issues with them during this time. So I wouldn't say yes to a two-night camping trip if I didn't have confidence in these kids this year, so.
Okay.
So can I just ask what kind of stuff the contract's going to say?
Oh, yes. So we have, I have, I've taken many class trips, or two before, and then I've done the Hyannis trip a lot with the contract. So I have a behavior consent that they're going to have to sign. The time from, really from the rest of the school year up until May, they'll have a behavior contract within the school, and then they'll also have a behavior contract for that weekend. So they'll have to make sure to sign off on a bunch of stuff. And all those things will be outlined as far as whether it's behavior, things to bring, not to bring. I have a checker, so I'm strict. You don't mess around, all right?
Good.
So I think right now it just looks like it's going to be about $100 per student, and that includes everything. We have tents and camping gear and all that stuff, so we won't have to buy any of that stuff. But just paying for all of the food, some of our admissions to some of the places, and then the campsites, so.
It's memorable.
Yes, we're hoping.
This senior trip. So I would do that, too, but I don't know, there's no, there's no mark there that says we have the vote to approve this.
Well, good, well, that's fun.
Oh, okay. Well, that's it.
Was that just a mistake, because I thought we did have to do this?
Yeah, overnight.
Yeah, you do. I, yeah, I did not put the...
That's fine.
Aster.
So my move to approve the senior class trip, thank you.
Do I have a second?
Yes, you have a second.
Any other questions? All of us in favor? Opposed? Congratulations, Senior Lloyd.
Yay!
Can't wait to hear about it.
The kids, yeah, because they're going to have so much fun. We'll definitely come and share out, so.
That'd be awesome. Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative Update.
All right, so with this new packet, we had a meeting last, Friday before vacation. We need Oxford, Oxford Central Office. And this is Record Two report. Just gives you kind of the broad strokes from Arnold Lundwell, who is the director, Des Todd, who's in charge of Special Ed. We are part of a 17-member collaborative with Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative. And this just details, gives you an idea of our students per district who are going to SWEAC for services and some of the services that they provide. And as a board, as a committee, we go down there, figure the budget, and we go through the process with them as you guys do when going to Brookfield. So this is just an update. If there's any questions, I can try to answer them. If not, I can get an answer from Arnold, that Arnold wants to get up to.
How many students do we have there?
Right now, we have two.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but for those who don't know, I believe that that's right off the Route 12, right next to where the Fire Department is. Is that correct?
There's more than one campus.
Okay, but their office isn't that right there, next to the...
Yes.
Right, next to the playground, not the baseball field, the Fire Department, right off Route 12.
They provide speech therapy in the school, too. Do they send someone here to do that stuff, or do we have...
We have PT and we used to have the Teacher of the Deaf that came from there, but physical therapy is from SWAC.
Right. Yeah, they have services that come to the school.
Yeah.
Yep.
No, I was just saying that that's, you said it was in Oxford, so I'm just trying to...
Well, no, we, so, I'm sorry. SWAC is not in Oxford. Our meetings are in Oxford.
Right, but their headquarters is in Oxford.
Yeah, we don't meet at the, no, the headquarters are not in Oxford.
No?
No, we meet at Central Office of Oxford Public Schools.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the host, that's not where they live.
It says here on this that there's speech, you have speech here. We have speech and language, therapeutic and contractual services.
I think it's on an as-needed basis they provide the outsourced.
We have a handful of students. Every month we receive services from there. They're a pride, we say.
Do you need any further follow-up?
No.
Okay.
Student Representative Report.
Thank you. Again, this month, my report's kind of short. We're mostly focused on our Hyannis trip, which we are taking next week. We are very excited preparing a lot of us going. It is going to be our last year, which is sad, but looking to make the most out of it. Got a lot of new students going who it's going to be their first year, which we're very excited to show them just how much fun it is. Then again, in April, we'll have our spring conference. For past information, we had our Excellence Book and Award submissions. At the beginning of this month, we submitted the MASC Excellence Book, and this year we applied for the National Council of Excellence Award. And we'll find out about the MASC Excellence Book at our spring conference, Hyannis Conference, next week. And the national one, we'll find out about later in the spring. The week before break was our annual Unity Week, and it was used to enhance our sense of community as a school and show support for all different types of people. We had days like Team Up Against Bullying, and we wore like sports apparel. We had a purple day for, I think it was like relationship violence. We were going to have a Highlight Our Differences Day, but that was unfortunately the snow day. But just different days like that. We had some activities at lunch. We did Spread the Word to End the Word, and Jake made a bunch of different ribbons that stand for different causes, just to kind of get everyone involved. Our upcoming information, as Mr. McCormick already mentioned, we have our winter sports pep rally tomorrow at the end of the school day. And this is just kind of to celebrate our basketball teams. Last year, we used it as cheer, but we don't have a cheer team this year. We are just very excited to get to celebrate, because our girls varsity team is the early champions, and Jose is thousand points, and just sending both teams off to their states games. So that'll be very exciting. And then just the basic every time, our social media is Instagram and Facebook are at Amistuko. And a reminder that our meetings are always open to the school and community if anyone wants to pop in to see how our meetings are run, or has a question, or anything like that.
Any questions? No, thank you, Olivia. Your time is growing short with you, Olivia.
Unfortunately, yes.
Unfortunately, or that's just part of the natural cycle, right? There's a big shoes to fill.
Yeah, I have confidence we're going to find someone who's going to take over, and it'll be like I was never gone.
Well, I don't know if that's true. You know, you're doing a great job. You're doing a great job. I think that's just a standard that we're holding everybody to, so, for you.
I think, I just happened to look up what Spread the Word to End the Word was, because I didn't know. And if you want to explain it a little, I think that would be nice to say.
Yeah, so Spread the Word to End the Word is a Special Olympics program that we participate in, where you basically, it's to stop and make, to stop the use of the R-word in students' vocabularies and just to make them aware of what it actually means. And because not all students are aware of what the word necessarily means and how it can make people feel, and that it's not an appropriate word to use. Students use it far too often in ways that it should not be used. So we use it to spread information about that, and we make a big banner that says Spread the Word to End the Word. Everyone signs their names, basically pledging that they're going to not use this word anymore.
Thank you.
Any other questions? School Committee reports regionalization update. I have something. Oh. So on Thursday, the Chairman of the Committee actually sent out an email saying that they have the latest regionalization agreement from the attorneys, and he's looking to schedule a meeting for either the sixth or the 13th of March. And so all members of the North Brookfield contingent have responded and replied all, saying that they were available on either day. And there have been four or five others who responded to all, saying what days they were available. There's been no response back yet from the Chair. I don't know if there's been other responses that were not replied at all. So hopefully, next week, or the week after, we'll have our next meeting, and then we'll have more of a report. Any other school committee reports?
Did their attorney, if their attorney replied all, saying you can only go on the two days, is that correct?
Oh, I don't remember.
What, maybe the first day is Saturday, March 6th?
I don't remember. Let's see. Yes, he's only available on March 6th. So in order to have that as our date, you need to have the information from the Chair live on Friday, right? Because we need 48 hours, so you need to be able to post on Monday, or if not, it's going to be on Wednesday. So just so everybody's aware, in the event that that does not happen, if we do not get the confirmation from the Chair, by Friday, we cannot post a time and have the meeting on Wednesday, and therefore we'll have to find other dates, because there, because the attorney for the Regionalization Committee is not available on the 13th.
I think actually before Friday, because Moon is in the office on Fridays. So would that be third afternoon, or...
No, because it's 48 hours. So as long as you get the information by Friday, you could post Monday morning. You can send it down Monday.
Exactly, yeah.
Right. No, I understand. Right, but the meeting doesn't happen until usually, and he's not available until 7:30 on the 6th, which our meetings are normally at 6:00 o'clock. So I'm not even sure that either of those two days have been worked for him, because now that I look at that, our meetings are usually at 6:00 PM, so I don't know that either of those two days worked for him. So we'll have to figure that out. I'll reach out to the Chair tomorrow and find out what he plans to do about that. Hopefully, we can get an answer. Any other school committee reports? Financial reports?
So again, I place in your packets kind of breakdown of the past month or so. People also received this evening, resigned off, some transfers that will be presented in the next funds packet. And the intent there is to show or to erase some of the deficit and some of the items that we've incurred over the course of the year. And a big part of that is moving money from general funds to offset grants, so. I think that's, we've talked, we've done this before. We've had to sign transfers before for that exact reason, and that's what we did this time as well. The last line on there, which is that we itemized the amount of money spent on salaries, but as of right now, we are 51.57% spent for the year according to this.
That's about average this month.
Right.
Any questions on the financial report? So the only question I have is, does that clear all the transfers that you have done? Does that clear all the deficit lines, or are we somewhere else?
So it will, it will clear, that's a hard to answer kind of exactly, but what it'll do is that when we do, when we transfer from general fund to a grant account, it has to be transferred to a different account code. When you transfer money from general fund, let's say, construction supplies, elementary school, to office supplies, like, that's a re-class, so that will be able to bring up the general fund money. I'll be able to re-class those money to have all the numbers. It'll be nothing in the negative.
So those are also transfers, right? They were also transfers. So if the budget came to us and said, just so we're clear, if the budget came to us and said, there's $50,000 in school supplies. Where, right? Let's just say that, right? And all of a sudden, we needed $10,000 of that to go to technology, that's a shame, and that needs to come to us for approval for the transfer, right? So whether, whether that hap, I'm sorry, I didn't cut you off. But whether that happens through a conversation with the superintendent and us to make sure that we understand that that's going to us in the very next month, so we can vote that? Or if it happens, and then it comes to us, and we voted the next month?
We don't need to vote. We just need to decide it.
No, I, but it's, but it's not, it's basically essentially the same as that, right? We have to approve it, and it has to come from this committee, so that the townspeople understand, right? Because we vote a budget that they don't really get, and he's saying, all they get to say on is the bottom line. They get to see the budget, but they don't get a vote on that whole budget, right? So all they get is a vote on, is the bottom line number. And so when we start moving stuff around, they get to understand that we're moving stuff around, and why, right? So that's the whole point of the transfers. It's not a matter of, we don't think that they need to happen. It's a matter of that the townspeople get to understand why we're moving money, right? So if we went to them, so we need $50,000 in textbooks, and all of a sudden we take $25,000 out of that and use it for technology, or we have a couple of custodians here for custodial supplies, right? If we did that, they need to understand that, because next year, when the budget ends out, we may have to increase the budget line up to the custodians by $25,000, because we had to come up with some money for that, right? It's just a matter of being transparent with the folks who fund us, right? So that's the reason for the transfers. So I just want to make sure that, that was the reason for the question. Are there other transfers that need to happen that we have not done? And if we can, please let's get those in place, so that we can get it out for the public. But you got to vote it. Understood.
It's exciting, the thing, so otherwise, if we wait...
It's assigning the thing, so otherwise if we wait till the next meeting to sign off on this, if Cindy has some that she can log as she goes through the month, our next month's report, which goes into the public record, we'll have those already accounted.
Understood. The point is, they're a part of the public record, they're not part of the public records.
I know, but I'm saying, but you're, you're speaking as though we have to vote them. And to be clear, watching them all.
I said that two signatures is, is what's required, right? But it does need to be part of the public record so the public gets to know what we're changing in the budget.
I just wanted to clarify, it doesn't have to wait till the next meeting. We can, we can sign them as we go when we're signing for everything else.
We can sign them as part of the off package, absolutely. Yep. Any other questions? Superintendent's report?
Okay, so this is in two parts. There's some general updates and then I'll get to the revised budget presentation for this evening. First item that you see in the packet are the two par professionals that departed from the district. I know we had a conversation at last, the last month's meeting that you want an update on a monthly basis.
I appreciate that.
Who is leaving the district? So that is, that's, those two, those two par professionals have left. Next item, we are pleased to announce that the entire school district received what's called a grant 311. That's supporting students' social, emotional learning, behavioral, mental health and wellness. This is a $95,000 grant that we awarded. This is a competitive grant, so we had to apply for this grant, go through a screening process. We have a meeting with our grant coach this Friday to kind of look at how we're gonna utilize this money and have this money spent by June 30th. We've already met, in our grant proposal, we had outlined the areas that we wanted to use these funds for. And we received the full amount that we asked for. But to be very concise, we're looking to increase our in-school group counting for our students. We talked about this throughout the year, how we've seen a rise in product expertiseism. We've also seen a rise in students who have mental health needs. And we right now have two outside agencies who work on our kids during the school day. We want to increase that so that we can now have students accessing small groups with the councils during the school day as well. We're also gonna purchase some sensory and cognitive corner supplies for both schools to support students who have increased anxiety. We are going to use some of this money to purchase our second step, which is a K through 12 SCL curriculum. It's used, it's used at the elementary school right now. They are coming out with a high school curriculum this spring that we'll use here at the Genius High School as well. So we're excited about that. That's a, that's a tried and true curriculum that has been used at the elementary school for several years. And we're doing similar things at the high school, but this is more of a consistent path for grades K through 12. We'll continue our work with Mass Ideas. We've been working with them, professional development with them, with our staff. We're starting to phase in some work with our students this year. And then we're gonna look to use, allocate some money towards some road course upgrades. And also we can use some of our certifications. Some of the staff that was training in our road course have left the district the last couple of years. So we're hoping to get more staff members trained to be able to use the road course. And this grant, like some of our grants, has the opportunity to be renewed for next year. So we're hopeful that we can show the state that we can use these funds appropriately, which we have a very good plan. That we can renew this for some additional funds for the following years. So Stacy McAlwens is gonna oversee this. She's had a lot of input in this grant. She's gonna be the one running this grant with a core group of teachers and councils from both schools. And they will meet monthly to work on this. Additionally, we were.
Can I just ask you a question? Of course. Only because you said the, the second step was a new curriculum for the middle to high school people?
It would be.
And then you said it's the curriculum that will follow. So I'm just trying to understand.
So we use second step in the elementary school? They are coming out with a curriculum for Genius High School students this year. They're gonna adopt, so they're gonna use it for K through 12.
But it's not our current curriculum?
No, it's not.
Okay, the reason why I'm asking that question is because the curriculum is approved by the committee. And I just want to make sure that we get a chance to see that before it gets implemented.
Additionally, we were awarded part of the away grant. If you recall, last year, we awarded a grant for grades 6 through 8, our STEM technology. This grant is for grades K through 5. This is a similar training for those elementary school teachers to work with our STEM teacher so they can do their STEM curriculum in their classes. This grant will cover the cost of the training for our staff. We also have two additional interviews coming up with the 1-8 Foundation in early March, where we're looking for additional funding to support these programs in the way of installables, for our equipment. So we've worked with 1-8 in the past, and they are looking for schools like Northbrookview that have invested the time. And so we're really looking at their STEM offerings. So we're excited to be having these opportunities. And then last but not least, I mentioned this before as well, which finally came to fruition. We received just under $19,000 from the ARPA committee. This will be to upgrade our video camera system. We'll be adding three external cameras, plus changing over our camera system from analog to digital. So this work, we hope to have this work done before the end of the school year is playing. But we are excited to have this. We've been, I've been working with Board of Health and the ARPA committee for almost a year now. And it was tabled for several meetings because of various reasons, and we finally got the approval. So excited to get that up and going. It's a much needed upgrade for our system. Our system here at the high school is the original camera system. So this will be much easier and kind of intuitive for our principals to use in our head cases. So plus the sort of cameras will be a huge add bonus.
Before you get on to the budget, because I'm assuming that's what you're done now, next?
Yes.
Are there any questions about this part of the report?
Yes. So are you, about the powers that last, are you have open positions?
Yes, we're currently trying to fill those positions.
So we need two powers. Anybody out there? We need two.
I looked up these curriculum and some of the information that I found for the second step eighth grade curriculum, I didn't feel comfortable with. And so how do we move forward with that? I think that some of the information that's being shared at the eighth grade level is some, that parents would want to be aware and informed about. There are certain things according, in their curriculum with bullying, harassment, LGBTQ, social justice activism and stuff like that. And so how do we make sure that everybody's aware and that we have all the information? Is there a presentation that's coming or is it part of the way? Do you have to take it and that's it?
We currently have, you know, lessons of bullying and harassment. I mean, we do that now. This would just be a more streamlined approach. We'll get a curriculum for grades K through 12. We, like I said, we currently use second step in elementary school. We have it several years. So this is not a totally new curriculum in the district at all. It's been something that was, I think, at least five years, Miss Priestley?
One.
In the elementary school, under a grade eight, grade eight, right?
What, yes, that's, I mean, currently, yes, elementary school is grades K through 6. So the curriculum for the Genius High is agent number for grades 7 through 12. A lot of these same topics are in the new phys ed health frameworks that the state adopted. And they have been as well. So that's something that's, that's been ongoing at the state level.
I had read that some of the statewide changes didn't go to every single school in terms of the sex ed. Am I wrong on that?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
So did every, I, I, you know what? I don't want to speak to it if I don't have it like right in front of me. But I had, there were certain schools that weren't necessarily included into changing the complete sex ed. And I had thought, I had looked it up and seen that Northbrookville wasn't the one that was getting a huge revamping for the sex ed. But I'm gonna look into that, I'll bring it next time.
It's not a district by district, it was a state initiative. So they had to be done with frameworks since, I want to say 2010-ish. So this is a complete update to the health, the sex ed frameworks. Now, as of the past, there would be mechanism where if a family wants to opt out of some of those lessons, they can. That's something we do now currently, and we will continue to do for, like you said, sex ed or different topics that if a family chooses not to be part of it, they can do that.
So I think her point, if I could, was is there going to be a presentation for the parents? So they understand what the change is in the curriculum, what it is today to what it's going to be based off of this? I'm not judging whether it's good or bad. It's not my, I'm just asking, is there going, I think that was her original question. Is there going to be a presentation for the parents who are concerned or may be concerned?
Who are informed.
This is what we teach today. This is what the new standard is, or this is what the grant will give us to, or this is what the curriculum from the grant is. This is so therefore what we'll be teaching going forward tomorrow. Is there, is there planned a presentation for them to come and see and understand? So they can make an intelligent choice about whether they want their child to participate in that particular section of the educational program? So is that something that you have on the books or something that you?
Well, like I said, the second step curriculum for the high school has not even been given to the public yet. So we know it's coming. Based on our experience at the elementary school, we'd like to adopt this model. And we think, like I said, consistency is key. But of course, we can, we can surely have a, either a conversation here at this level or a conversation with parents.
At the subcommittee level, we have a curriculum subcommittee. We don't, I don't lose my mind with you, because we haven't had any curriculum issues yet, but. We do, I'm just saying that the parents might want to have.
And these are big ticket items. These are hot topics. These are things that people have opinions on.
Yep, and that's, and that's fair. And I don't want to speak in this scenario, but I know that currently they have an opt-out mechanism. The family does not, the syllabus is given to the students and their families throughout the course of the year for, for health class. If the family does not want their student to be part of this conversation, they can opt out. We've had it happen the last couple of years. So that's always the right event for me. And we don't, we don't force the student to be in that classroom. You give an alternative activity. I had one when I was building principal, and I think we had at least one to mine always last year. So that is always an option. I don't know if you still want to speak to that at all or?
Yeah, if it makes you feel any better too, Ms. Matthews. I used second steps in middle school last year. I used it for three or four years. And the kids, we really loved it. The staff liked it, the kids loved it. I didn't have any complaints from parents about it. But we published it ahead of time so they knew what topics. And we can certainly do something like that so parents see that, to your point. And some of the stuff that, the bullying and things like that, we talk about now. And in fact, we have the DA's office come in. They were here last month, I think, the end of the month. And they did some presentations around those same topics as well. So we do discuss them in school. It's not going to be new to our kids. But to your point about getting that information out to the parents, we can certainly, you know, I can make sure I communicate that out to the parents too. Just to let them know, you know, what the topics are and when approximately we cover those topics so they're aware of that too.
I would also like to add that the scope and sequence for all three programs is available on the second step website. It's very, it covers, it shows everything that's taught in all three programs, so anyone can look that up.
So that's a good thing. So if any member of the community out there has children or in this community thinks that they might have a concern about that.
And the draft of the high school one is up there.
Scope and sequence is available on this site. That's the.
Second step.
Second step, with the secondstep.com.
Dot org.
Dot org. Secondstep.org. And if you have a concern, please raise it or, you know, talk to the administration. They will help you to figure out what the best thing for your, your particular students are, so. Email me. Don't email me, I can't help you. I'm gonna forward it off to, to Tim. Tim's gonna forward it off to John. You guys are gonna be waiting forever. Don't email me and I can't help you. I have nothing to say about that until it comes in front of us as a curriculum change, so. All right. Anything else? Okay. So you feel about it?
Oh, okay, all right. So shifting gears a little bit, I, so I put a memo to kind of give you the brief overview of what are these next handfuls slide. I shared mine from the original presentation, which is about 20 slides, about 10. But a couple of things I just want to highlight. So my initial presentation for the FY24. For the initial FY25, excuse me, FY24 budget, so this year's operating budget, was 7.191 million. If you recall, I know that I believe Mr. Lyle and Mr. Cannon were at this meeting. We're at this meeting back, I believe it was late September or early October. I don't even call the exact date. When we had a conversation with the select board and, I mean, the school committee and myself were all there. I was out at the police station. That we had an unaccounted for addition placement that the school districts had to, initially, the way it was phrased to me and to us, was to reimburse the town. So I worked with Schofield. We were able to identify funds within our budget to, we recommended a transfer of funds back to the town to offset the expenditure they made to this addition placement. They decided to rescind the funds. So what that meant was that our budget was lowered by $97,000, $97,999. That was the cost of this addition placement. So you see that, and I, on this next slide here, you can see those adjustments. I highlighted those in a little neon lime green, and it's not the greatest however, it sticks out from the presentation. So that's why I chose it. But with that reduction in the overall budget and the addition of one more student that we have moved into the district for addition placements, so our grade addition placements to 12, we're looking at a $7,340 difference between FY24 and FY25, which is an increase from my initial budget presentation. This is an overall increase percentage wise of 10.35. And I just, on this next slide, you see again a copy or a slide of the major budget drivers. And they remain the same. We're still talking about, about salaries. We're talking about sped tuition and transportation. There were no changes as of yet to transportation or salaries. I know, you know, we may have some changes, may have some changes based on negotiations over the next couple of weeks. But, you know, that has not changed to date. But you're looking at sped tuition to go up for a total of $169,000 FY24, FY25. And that's a 10.4% increase from FY24 to FY25. Just one other slide, just in context, you know, I don't want to say these numbers over and over again. But if you take away these three major budget drivers, our increase would be less than 2%. And then what I have just shown on the last couple of pages with our offsets, we have now increased our overall offsets to just over $2 million. It's an increase of $253,000 FY24 to FY25. And I took, like I said, I took out a lot of the slides with some of the narrative from before. I don't think it was appropriate for tonight. I want to give you, really, the kind of granular pieces of this.
Do you have any questions? Just give me any other questions. Want to just the budget after we approve?
Tell them one by March 1st. Now, I will say this, we called the process last year. We approved the budget. That budget obviously changed multiple times through conversations with the FICCOM, the select board. We have a meeting next week, March 7th, with the finance committee. They've asked me to come back and present these revisions and to discuss kind of next steps. Are they gonna give you ideas on the next steps? But this is a very similar process we went through last year. If we approve the budget, the budget changed multiple times, or many conversations and meetings.
Do I have a motion on the floor? I move to approve the budget.
Can I ask one quick question first? Or is it way too late?
We got a second motion and then we, at this point, we're sort of. We got a second emotion and then we, at this point, we sort of have motion.
Oh, right, okay, second emotion. All right, now I can ask questions. So you're saying that we got another student that was out of district, and so that changed it. So theoretically, it's too late for any circuit breaker? Theoretically, next year, there might be a circuit breaker?
We put the projected number in there. So we have the student now.
Yeah.
And we have the projection. The circuit breaker number increased by about $80,000 based on projections. Now that's at 56% reimbursement. We're hopeful, we're hopeful that goes to 75%, which will make that number even higher. So I went on the low end to be safe, but that's, we do project that that student in there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's in there.
Thank you.
So with the circuit breaker projection, we're still at a 10% increase?
Yes.
Because you're at the conservative investment.
Yeah, and that could go down, like if, if you.
But it's not going to go down to 2%. It's going to go down to.
No.
9.3%.
No, I don't want to, I don't want to guess at this point.
No, I, I just.
If we go to 75% reimbursement, that's a big jump. That's almost a.
So it's not 75% on that one individual, 75% on everything? Got it. Okay, that is a big jump. Okay, got it. So that's a big, the special agent, obviously, as we all know, all of us know, is a big nut. So you get 75% percentage, that's a big, big change. Last year, that's changing as the budget process was going. I remember we were at the committee with the finance committee, and you were getting a different number each week as far as what they were coming up with. It was a.
The state association always meets with, with local legislators. We always advocate at least 75, working towards 100% of that, which I know, it sounds like a crazy statement, but that is the goal. At some point, get as close to 100% reimbursement as possible because every district is feeling a pinch, but smaller districts, small districts like Northbrook will, one, two students, as you add those students.
It's a big percentage, right? Jump of the population and.
It's a big number.
Okay, you have a motion in a second. Is there any other questions regarding the budget? All those in favor of approving the budget as presented? Any else here or something? All right. Administrator's report. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. All right. So at the high school, we're excited that Kelly Ademides has joined us as our media specialist. She has a lot to offer our students, and will give presentations to classes around plagiarism, AI, and research. Staff is going to be able to go to the library every Tuesday and Thursday from 8:00 to 11:00 with their class, or send students down in small groups to check out books during this time as well. We already talked about this a little bit. Tomorrow, February 27th, we have our pep rally to celebrate our boys' and girls' basketball teams. I had to change a little bit of what I submitted. Our girls' team also has a playing game tomorrow. We're home at 6:00. And our boys' team is in Tynesboro tomorrow at 6:00 PM. So they're both playing in a playing game, and if they win, they'll lead the state playoff tournament.
I think the girls' game is in the morning. I don't think they're in a playing game.
Yeah, I just talked to Ms. Paul. It's funny you said that. I asked, I asked about that, and Ms. Kemp told me they did have a playing game today, tomorrow. Because I thought they might as well.
They play tomorrow?
They play tomorrow, yeah. It is, but right, I thought they had qualified, but.
That's what I saw.
That's the question, is whether they qualified for the playoffs without, regardless of what happens.
I think, yeah. So tomorrow, so hopefully everyone can come down and support our girls at 6:00 PM tomorrow. This week, we're also excited that our esports team begins play against schools throughout Massachusetts, but it's going to be coached by Sloan Anderson. And for those who don't know, esports is an MIAA sanctioned event, open to students in grades seven through 12. We have three teams, our first year, we're going to have three teams that are going to be competing, made up of students in grades seven through 10. And we'll be competing in Smash Brothers this year. It plans to expand to more games next year. March 12th is going to be our Wellness Day at the high school. Wellness is the act of practicing healthy habits on a daily basis to attain better physical and mental health outcomes. So instead of just surviving, our students will be thriving. We'll have outside speakers come into our school to talk to our students about mental and physical wellness programs. Also, it's a great opportunity for our staff to connect to our students as they're going to teach classes on practicing healthy habits to our students. Our goal is for all our students to try and learn something new on that day. March 28th is going to be our career fair at the high school. Right now, we have over 25 different companies and speakers coming to speak to our students about different careers. Students will receive information about different careers they're interested in. And this is a great opportunity for our kids to prepare for the future and focus on their life after high school. Mark your calendars for our next open house information night, which is going to be May 8th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at both the elementary school and the high school. We're excited to have John Morello as our guest speaker. And for those of you who don't know, John is a well-known actor and public speaker, who's going to be performing his play Dirt for our students and families. Dirt inspires people to take action by urging them to reflect upon the choices that they make in their daily lives, from what they put into their bodies, to the way they treat one another, to the way they treat themselves. So we're excited about that. John will be performing at the elementary school auditorium at 6:00 PM. Congratulations to our seniors of the week, Jose Rivera and Lola Sukrev. We've already talked about Jose. He just became one of our 1,000-point scorers in basketball. Jose's going to be attending college in the fall, plans on becoming an accountant. His advice to students, never give up and push through any obstacle you face. Nothing is impossible because the word itself says impossible. Lola will be attending college in the fall, plans on becoming a physical therapist. Her advice to students, try and find things that you're passionate about. And that's all we have.
But did you say the guest speaker was coming with the information night?
May 8th.
What kind of, um, of, of, what kind of health and wellness speakers do you have coming?
For, for which day, for our.
Uh, March 12th.
So we have, it's funny, I just came out of our school council meeting. We're hoping that BHN has talked about coming. We're trying to get some therapeutic dogs to come out for our kids. So we're excited about that. So we're talking to different companies to come out and speak to our students. But right now, we have BHN and some therapeutic dogs coming.
So for like wellness, like physical wellness, do you have any?
Yeah.
I know, you're on the spot.
Yeah, I know. Thank, thank you for that. But no, Vivid, and I can tell you the name because we just talked about this today. I think it's called Vivid. They are, they work with, they're going to be coming out to talk to our students about health and wellness. They're going to bring out like their battle ropes and things like that. Coop Kinnon will be here and is also part of that as well. So those are two things that we hope for.
Okay. And didn't you have, I was trying to find the flyer, but I couldn't find it. Didn't you have an open house, like racial night on the high school?
Yeah, we did. And thank you to, yeah, Ms. Priestley, for that. It was in January. And the weather wasn't the greatest, but we had a pretty good turnout. We're excited about that. Almost every staff member was there. It was really a great night. And so this is sort of our spring kickoff. The other, I didn't mention this, but also we're going to have, the arts will be there. So Mr. Martinez will be there with artwork from the students. Mr. Bills will be there. The band will be performing. So we have, we have a lot of other stuff. Yeah, thank you for asking.
The video of that event is on the webpage, so you can watch the whole.
The video of the event? Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, Ms. Priestley, yeah, thank you for that.
You're up.
Thank you. So I want to.
I'm sorry, it was early.
I want to start my report with, just to talk a little bit about the Be Ready Play Group. So this is something that was new this year. Every Monday, so we don't have our preschool students on Mondays, so our classrooms are available for the Community Connections Watch UCE to use. And it's through the Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Grant Program, which is funded by the Early Education Department. And they used to meet in our school regularly years ago. And then somehow they got moved to the public library, and the public library has become a difficult place for them because they're growing, their sizes are growing, and the space, if you've been to the library here in town, the children's area, it's not very big. So they were looking to come back to the school. So I met with the director, she's the grant coordinator, Patty Wokes, and she, you know, we, we set it up so they could come once a week and use our play, our preschool classrooms. And it's awesome. It's great for the kids. It's anywhere from babies up to age five. And they come in and they do songs and art and, you know, different things with their, with their families. And I remember taking my kids when they were small. And the, also Kathy Deja and Lisa Tessa, shout, shout out to them. They're a part of the program as well. And it's, it's great having them back in the building. We really like it. It's a good chance for the kids to get accustomed to our building and, you know, our, our staff. They see people in the hallways and everything. So it's nice. We also had our student of the month. We do it every month. We celebrated our inclusive friends in January. In February, this Thursday, we'll be celebrating our curious students. Looking forward to that. Kindergarten registration's underway, so Dresden is mailing out letters to all of the families from the census. So that started. We celebrated the 100th day of school this, this past month. We had a spirit week this past month. February and March bring a lot of fun things. We have Earth Day coming up in April, so just a lot of good stuff going on. We had, as Mr. McCormick mentioned, Camp Read a Lot the Friday before vacation. Shout out to Mr. Sheldon for organizing it and all the volunteers for running the stations. We have a newspaper there. I think, I don't know which paper we were in, but I heard that there was a feature. So that was pretty cool. PTO, thank you to them for the pancake breakfast. It was, it was great then. It was our 10th event, 10th year of doing it, which I realized after the reporter left, she was like, how long have we been doing this? It's like, oh, this is our 10th year. You know, we didn't celebrate that or anything, but it was nice to know. That's enough, yeah. MCAS is around the corner. I didn't put that in. I'll be in next month's update the dates for MCAS, but that's coming up, so. Any questions?
What's an inclusive friend?
Just someone who doesn't leave anyone out, plays with everyone, makes everyone feel like they belong.
Students' goal is kind of self-explanatory.
Yeah, we also celebrate, you know, academic achievement because that's, you know, that's what we do at school. So we make sure to recognize that.
So I have received multiple emails regarding this reading day on Friday, and I just want to put it out there.
Yes.
I love the fact that I've been ready to do that. I cannot because of work on this, but.
Tim and I are going to go.
For those.
We both said two out of three.
So if, if those, those, you hear everyone.
Oh, Rachel, that was awesome.
I don't want to say long. Wow. I actually thought, you know, Dr. Seuss book, I might be able to actually handle reading, but unfortunately, I have a prior commitment. So, but I did want to express my regrets of being invited. I, I, any other week, any other month, any other day, I just couldn't do it. So we have a report from our interim director of student services. Unless anybody has a question about that, we'll go pass that because she's not here with us today. And we have a report from our director of facilities. He is here. Do you have anything that you would like to say about your report?
Nope.
No. So Ray's issued his report to us. And if anybody has any questions? I don't see any. Okay, moving on. We have a technology update. Justin is also not with us. Does anybody have any questions about Justin's report? Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything you want to say about any of those three reports?
No, I, I really don't. Okay, I guess I'll ask you guys any questions.
Okay. Moving on then, old business, basement inventory update.
So some updates on this. I, I don't have the inventory yet. I did receive an email today from Ms. Adams, who is going to give inventory for the university management group by the end of this week, to apologize for the delay. And I do have an email address now, as opposed to just emailing LPAC blindly, an email address of the person in charge with email to get an update on the LPAC.
Okay.
You guys have the inventory of the school supplies for this community, those two others.
Yeah. So again, the issue is, we need to know what's inside that building. So in case something bad happened, we know what's there, right? So that's the whole key to that. And I don't think this committee is aware of all the things that, maybe they are, maybe they aren't, I don't know. But we should have it on record that we know what's inside of that facility. So, do you think we might have that for next?
If, if, you know, like I said, Anne has said to me today, she'll have to give by the two being by the end of the week. She also offered to give tours, if you guys are interested, of that part of the basement. I didn't think you would be, but I can throw that out there.
Yeah, it's more so that it's on the record. That's all.
And that, and I'm hoping to get a hold of the point person from LPAC. And I can't speak for that person, but hopefully I can get an update from them as soon as possible.
Wait, wait, don't, don't. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Nothing of the policy? Nothing of the new business? I'd like to take a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of personnel.
Is that moved?
I think it's second.
Oh, second.
All in favor of the roll call vote? Should we, before we do, should we announce? I'll do that right after. Thank you. Let us go.
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Aye. We will be coming back simply for the closure of the meeting. There will be no more public participation at that point. So we will just simply come out of executive session for the purpose of adjournment. At this point, we are ending executive session. Thanks.